Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Charlton Select Board meeting. Today is May 27, 2025. It's 6:30. We're at the Town Hall, and we're going to call this meeting to order. First order of business, please. Let's rise and pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on down to announcements. Basha?
At the Senior Center, anyone born in 1965 in Charlton, turning 60 this year, is invited to the Senior Center Birthday Party, and that's on Wednesday, June 18, from 5 to 7. Live music takes to a grant from the Cultural Council from 6 to 7 with jumping jumba. Medicare information available with Edspater, Home Adult Foster Care, and Trivally Elder Services. RSVP to the Senior Center at 508-248-2231. I also got this, which is so exciting. That's Charlton's Got Talent Show. So that's the semifinals already happened. My understanding is there was about 18 people who made it to the finals. So the Charlton Got Talent is on May 31 at Charlton Middle School from 2 to 5. Admission is $10 per adult, five children, under 12, and 30 maximum per family. Guys, come over. It's gonna be fun. And best for last, our dear Andrew Golos was notified by CMRPC, which sends for Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, that he had been awarded the Regional Collaboration Award. Congratulations, Andrew. You are amazing, and I'm very proud. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you. Sorry for the surprise. It's a good one.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Basha. Anyone else have the other announcements? All right, moving down, we'll move to open forum. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to come up and speak? Please come up to the microphone and just state your name and your address, please. And welcome.
Don Conapackee, 15 Denfield Road.
Victoria Conapackee, 15 Denfield Road.
We have a couple events happening at the Charlton Arts and Activities Center. I'm a member of the Activities Council. I'll go first, even though this is happening after. The Charlton Arts and Activities Center will be hosting the presentation, "The Theft of Dignity: What Adults Should Know About Teen Bullying." Join author Dennis Wise for an entertaining and eye-opening event on peer bullying. Dennis draws on examples from popular culture, including movies, TV shows, and novels, such as his own book, On Your Side. The goal is to connect with teens in a meaningful way, helping them understand the effects of bullying and encouraging a more respectful environment. With storytelling, humor, and real-world insight, Dennis delivers an engaging event for people of all ages who want to better understand what young people are facing and how we, as a community, can help make a difference, and provides practical tools to foster positive change. Now, this presentation is happening on Saturday, June 14, from 1 to 2 p.m. at the Charlton Arts and Activities Center at Ford Dresser Hill Road. There is no charge for admission, and this program is funded in part by a grant from the Charlton Cultural Council, a local agency which is supported by the Mass Cultural Council State Agency.
And I am... So the Pasture Prime Players is presenting our spring production, and the show Darling Mr. London opens this weekend on Friday. So Friday and Saturday this week and next week, so that's the 30th, 31st, and June 7th, or 6th and 7th, is at 7:30 p.m. Doors open at 7:00 p.m. And then on Sunday, June 1st and June 8th, it's at 2:00 p.m. Doors open at 1:30 p.m. I know that's at the same time as the Charlton's Got Talent, so I'm sure people will be at that instead. But it is a 1975 play that still kind of rings true to this day, where he's been talking to people on the phone, telling them about making up all these stories about himself, thinking, oh, they're from different countries, we'll never meet in person. But he does give them his address, and next thing he knows, they're all showing up at his house. So it can definitely be compared to the Internet of today. And additionally, we have one other announcement. Auditions for our summer show, She Kills Monsters, are happening next week on Tuesday, June 3, at 6:30 p.m., and Saturday, June 7, so same day as one of the shows, at 11:00 a.m. And there are roles for older teens up through adults.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Anyone else here for open forums? All right. Oh, sorry. Mr. Singer.
Coming for the board's arrest tonight, David Singer, 2 Keely Drive. I brought this up before. I think people are going to begin to get the gist that I'm not going away, because neither is the problem. About two and a half months ago, I went before the school committee with a request and received a very dissatisfactory answer, which was they don't need to do anything. They don't see the need. This was regarding hate, antisemitism, racism, bigotry, and the need to take a stand after what happened with the MTA. Sadly, after multiple times coming before this board to bring this board up to speed and hopefully everyone in town who's watching this, nothing has been done, no statements have been given. A little disheartened since I was going to come after certain things before, but I was asked to stop, step back, take a different approach, and get a letter sent from the Board of Selectmen, asking nicely if this committee would consider it. So I put that request to the Board of Selectmen, and it was unanimously voted down, including for the person whose idea it was to send the letter. So that's very discouraging. It also came even worse when these memes, these hate speech propaganda lies were spread online by school committee member Jean Costello. I'm giving these to the town. She's an elected official. This is... And in her capacity, I'm turning these in to Andrew. He can send these to the school committee and ask them to take action. It is needed. While I cannot give you names, I can tell you personally that I do know of an instance in the Charlton Middle School where students were goose-stepping behind a Jewish student. I do know of an instance in Shepherd Hill where a penny was thrown down the hallway at a Jewish student. And I do know of an instance on our Dudley Charlton Regional School System buses where threats were made against a Jewish resident's home for vandalism. So I'm sorry if I'm not going to sit here and take it, that we don't need to stand up to this. I expect more from every leader, not only on this board, but the school committee. And personally, I think if you don't have the backbone to stand up to racism, bigotry, and hate, then you shouldn't be on the school committee or the superintendent. And I'm hoping that anyone who hears this that agrees with me will reach out to their school committee. They will ask them to come together and issue a statement. And I would like to see the superintendent do the same. And I would like to see the school committee member who is spreading this hate, that we got the screenshots until they blocked, so we can't get anymore, would be nice to also have an apology from them, that they understand that this is not acceptable, not in this community or anywhere. I expect more from our town's leaders in every elected body.
We're still in open forum. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak?
No, can I say something to this without stepping down? So to what David said, I actually agreed with the idea of the letter. My understanding was to that concept, that we will talk about doing this all together as a group, and then, you know, go about signing or discussing it. I didn't feel that was appropriate to do it behind, you know...
So I appreciate that.
I didn't think I'd have to use that just yet. Here's what we're going to do. If you would like this to be on the agenda, a future agenda, then we can...
Oh, no, that's fine. I just wanted you to actually point out an incorrect point.
Understood, but this is not the time right now. If we want to put it on, at the end, we do. Thank you.
I think it's already on the agenda. I'll deal with it when that comes.
Well, thank you for understanding. All right, so next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the regular minutes of the Board of Selectmen on May 13?
Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 13, 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that we're unanimous. Pass. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we're on to appointments and resignations.
All right. So tonight, we have an appointment for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Garrett LaFrance and Marco Tibory. We've been notified by the Zoning Board of Appeals is recommending the appointment of their alternate members, Garrett LaFrance and Marco Tibory, as full members of the board. Once the board makes the appointments, we'll announce the two alternate member openings. I'd recommend the board make the appointments as requested.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for stepping up.
All right. Next is an appointment to the Boston Post-Kane Committee for Shawnee Boyce. Attaches a talent bank form from the Shawnee Boyce. Did we appoint it to the Boston Post-Kane Committee? Her term expiration date will be June 30, 2026, and I'd recommend the board make the appointment.
Do we have a motion?
I would recommend that board that makes that appointment.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. It's unanimous.
All right. Finally, we have a resignation here from the Historical Commission, Historic District Commission. Attaches a letter from Matthew Carlson resigning his position from the Historical Commission and Historic District Commission effective May 6, 2025, due to moving out of town. The board should accept this resignation, a letter thanking him for his services in your sign folder. We have announced the opening.
I move with regret.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's unanimous. Yes, please. Thank him for his service. All right, we're still a little early for the scheduled appointments. What can we bump up?
All right, I'll take care of the policies and procedures. So board deliberation vote on adoption of policies and procedures. At your last meeting, I provided you with select board rules, procedure that I asked to review. Let me know if you had any changes. Tonight, I'm asking the board to consider adopting those rules and procedure as presented.
Do we have a motion to adopt the policies and procedures as presented to us tonight by the town administrator?
So move.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you. Anything else you want to bump up?
Sure. We'll take care of liaisons to committees. So with the departure of Bill Barowski, an election of your member Karen Spiewack, the board should review the list of committees that you are liaisons to and choose which committees you will be representing. Currently, the list as follows. As for the Ben Shal Development Committee, we have Basha Zarowski and David Singer. For the CMRPC regular appointee was Bill Barowski, and the alternate was Basha Zarowski. For the Community Center Feasibility Study was Basha Zarowski. On the Economic Development Commission, Steve Corones. For the Fay Mountain Farm Committee was Bill Barowski and Pete Landset. And for the Fire Substation Committee, Steve Corones with Bill Barowski as the alternate.
How would those, the board wish to proceed? Do you want to stay where you are? Do you want to shuffle it around? I certainly will, you know, fill in much of where Bill was.
Madam Chair, I'll be willing to pick up the Fire Station Subcommittee Altimate for Bill.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah?
I stay on the Ben Shal, and I stay on a community that go together, as I was.
You can add me if you want to Fay Mountain with Pete, where Bill left.
Fay Mountain. Oh, thank you, David. And Steve, anything?
Are you missing old homie on here?
They don't appoint a liaison.
So just so to be clear, this is for liaisons to the committee, not actually a committee that is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. If you're appointed, obviously, then you actually have the voting rights. The liaisons, it's different. It's actually spelled out in the procedures.
Yeah, so note that the Fire Substation Committee is the one exception.
That is the one exception. Correct. Thank you.
So Pete, you're going to step up for the Fire Substation Committee?
As the alternate.
It's an alternate. Oh, whoa.
So do you want to stay on that one?
Yeah, yeah. It's almost...
And you want to say any economic?
We're paying bills now, yep.
Economic Development. All right, and then if the board is okay with this, I would be more than happy to go on to the CMRCP where Bill was. I would like to also join on the Community Center Feasibility Committee. There are no objections. Is there anywhere else? Do you need an alternate or anything? Anyone else you see? How about the... By law, separate. Is anywhere else that could fill in for anyone? Just let me know. You good? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the committee assignments as we just amended?
I move to accept the committee's assignments as recommended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Last time, speak now or... Don't say anything. You're good? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, now we're on time. So tonight, we have a scheduled appointment, and I'm going to let Andrew take the lead for a second here. It's a dangerous dog hearing.
All right, 6:45 appointment for a dangerous dog hearing on Gia owned by Maureen McGinty. Please find attached Public Hearing Guidelines for Dog Complaints for Use During the Hearing, which outlines the procedure for the hearing. The letter hand-delivered to Maureen McGinty by the Charlton Police Department with the date and time of the hearing. Seven-page complaint filed by Bill Lapage, eight-page report by ACO Emily Sears, and a one-page police report. Also, copy of MGL Chapter 140, Section 157, Nuisance or Dangerous Dogs: Orders for Remedial Action, Appeal, and Violation of the Order. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, upon a complaint is received on a dangerous dog, the hearing authority shall investigate or cause to be investigated such complaint, including examination on oath of the complainant and to make such order concerning the restraint or disposal of such dogs as may be deemed necessary. It is that order that the owner may then appeal to the district court. To start the hearing, I will ask the chairwoman to outline the public hearing process.
So I have to establish that there is a quorum. I do so. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and this is, let's see, this public hearing is called pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, on the complaint of the dangerous dog named Gia owned by Maureen McGinty. It went 85 Berry Corner Road, Charlton, Mass., and the time is 6:48 p.m. I want to make sure when we move down now that everyone who wishes to speak has to sign in on the paper that's on the table right up there. Did everyone do that? Anyone who's going to talk has to sign.
Afterward, I will swear on anybody who's speaking.
So as the town administrator mentioned, after all the people who wish to speak on this matter, sign the form. He will then swear you in.
Anybody who's going to be speaking, please raise your right hand. You have to meet. I state your name. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony I'm about to give in this matter will be the truth? The whole truth? And nothing but the truth? The knowledge of this oath, out of the pains and penalties of perjury. So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, thank you, everyone. I would now ask that the Animal Control Officer to come forward and give your report. Thank you, and welcome.
On the evening of March 22, 2023, I was notified by Mr. Lapage at 168 Berry Corner Road that his dog Sherman was attacked by the neighbor's dog. After speaking with Mr. Lapage, it was later identified that the dog belonged to Maureen McGinty at 185 Berry Corner Road. After speaking with Ms. McGinty, she explained that she was having a relative let Gia out, and she slipped her collar. At the time, Gia was up to date on her rabies vaccine and licensed with the town of Charlton. Gia was pulled on a 10-day quarantine, and Ms. McGinty was given a running-at-large first offense citation. Sherman was seen at the emergency vet the next day for injuries sustained during the dog attack. See provided document for vet bill. On December 30, 2023, and February 14, 2024, on two separate occasions, I was notified that Gia had gotten to a scuffle with the other dog in the home. Ms. McGinty stated that her other dog, Bo, was blind and deaf and didn't know how to respect Gia's boundaries, causing her to bite him. Gia was placed in a 10-day quarantine on each occasion and up to date on her rabies. Bo has since passed away, and there have been no other issues with the other dog in the home. On May 13, 2025, I received a call from Mrs. Lapage at 168 Berry Corner Road stating that Gia had come into her yard again and attacked her other dog, Penny, unprovoked. While on the phone with Mrs. Lapage, she said she was able to get Gia off of her dog, Penny, but then Gia went back for a second attack. Mrs. Lapage stated that she saw someone driving slowly past her house, and that person was able to retrieve Gia and bring her back home. I advised Mrs. Lapage, do bring Penny to the emergency vet, and we would follow up after. I immediately called Mrs. McGinty and made her aware of the situation. She made me aware that they had installed a fence back in 2023 in the backyard and stated that she had a dog sitter let the dogs out when they realized that the landscapers had left the gates open to the backyard, causing Gia to be able to escape. I told Ms. McGinty that Gia had to undergo her 10-day quarantine, and she would be given a citation for running at large. Ms. McGinty felt terrible reassuring me that Gia would not be left unsupervised in the backyard without a leash or a run. Ms. McGinty also called the vet directly and paid the vet bill for Penny that Penny occurred. And that is the report. I did provide the copy of the two citations, which Maureen did pay. And I attached the bite reports from each bite that happened.
Thank you very much. Next, I would ask that the complaint testimony? For the complaint testimony?
Did you guys already swear?
No, we'll have to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Do you solemnly swear? Did you do all the things I told everybody to solemnly swear about before?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Can we begin?
Yeah, everything the Animal Control Officer lines up exactly with the truth. Multiple attacks by the same dog. My wife was there both times while I was either at work or in the hospital this last time. She was unable to break up the dog fight on her own. And we just want to be sure that something actually measurable concrete is being done to prevent this from happening again. We love dogs. We've had dogs our entire life. We don't take this lightly, but this is a pattern. We just want to be sure something's going to be done about it.
The only thing I would note that's missing from the Animal Control statement is there were also a couple of occasions that didn't result in an attack, but she was in our yard. My dogs were inside, and I shooed her out on one of the occasions. And then on another occasion, I actually, I called Animal Control and said, she's in our yard. I'm trying to grab her. And then the same minivan was driving slowly by, and so I waved her in, and she came in and took the dog. And so there was no attack that day, but it's just multiple occasions where she's been in our yard.
So there's no fence between the properties?
We have an invisible fence for our dogs, so they have the shock collars. And I believe the owner has a fence for her yard, but it's like four houses down the road from us.
To the chair? Has there any been aggression to humans, or has it just been to the animals?
On our property, just to our animals.
Any other questions from the board?
Was there any other complaints, Emily, about that dog? Anybody else complain?
It's really just been this family.
I know it's going to be a silly question, but any other dogs within those four houses from your property to the other?
Across the street, there is some.
Further down. Oh, yeah, Danielson.
So we're trying to figure out how, you know, the dog gets...
There's multiple dogs in the neighborhood that end up in our yard, just by nature of where we live, but this is the only dog that's ever attacked our dogs.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Thank you. Thank you. And now we'll hear any testimony from others who would like to testify to any of these events right now.
My name's Maureen McGinty. It's my dog, Gia. I need to compose myself, because I'm a very emotional person. First of all, I would like to apologize to both of you. I really feel awful about this. I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep myself together. I am the biggest dog lover you'll find. I love dogs, and that's why I feel so horrible about this. But I do want to point out to all of you that I'm not a reckless dog owner. I take this very seriously, and despite the incidents that have occurred with Gia, I can say that I am as diligent as I possibly can be. And I just wanted to talk about a few of the incidents that happened and the actions that I've taken to try to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Excuse me. Could you pull the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay. So the first incident, my brother had come over. He had tried to take her out to the car on a leash and a collar, and she slipped the collar. And there's no reason why he should be putting her on a collar, because she should be on a harness. And so that happened. He knows now not to do that. He knows to make sure that the car's in the garage when he brings her out, so he doesn't even have to do that, because she does like to go for car rides, and that's what they were doing. So he knows very clearly not to do that anymore. The second incident that just happened a couple weeks ago, my dog sitter was over. My dog sitter comes three days a week. I work a lot of hours. And basically, I was at a funeral when it happened at that time, actually. And she didn't realize that the gate had been left open. I have lawn people that come over and do my yard, and they actually left the gate open a few times. I've spoken to them several times. I have text messages that shows. I've told them repeatedly, don't leave the gate open. There's no way they can escape my yard unless the gate's open. I put up a new fence, 2023, so this wouldn't happen anymore. And these, I can't explain why, but for some reason, they've left the gate open a few times, and I've since fired them. I've hired a new company to do my lawn, because obviously I can't trust them to do that. But again, I have, so now what I've done is I have a padlock. So there's two gates. There's a gate in the front and a gate in the back. It's fully fenced in, the entire yard. And the gate in the back was left open. I told my dog sitter repeatedly, like, make sure you check the gate in the front, because that's the one that they had left open in the past. And it was the back this time, because that's where they dump all the grass. And anyway, to make a long story short, I now have a padlock on the one in the back, so they cannot open that one. I don't want that one opened under any circumstances. In the front, I have a sign saying, make sure you close the gate. Like, I'm trying, I'm sorry I'm rambling on here, but I'm just trying to show that I'm taking every possible measure I can to prevent this from happening again. I do take this very seriously. She's had a rough life. She was abandoned while she was pregnant, when she was three years old, down in Georgia, and she came up here. She was on the streets for a while, and the Great Dog Rescue of New England ended up rescuing her and brought her up here. And originally, they told me that she was good with other dogs. It's turned out not to be the case. It's turned out not to be the case. But I've been working with her. I've gotten- I've brought her to a trainer to try to help her, but she just has these moments where she just snaps. And she's great with people. She loves people. She loves strangers that come over. She's never bitten a stranger. She's never bitten anyone in my house. And she actually is just- I know it sounds crazy to say after hearing all these incidents, but she is a sweet dog. And I just don't want to give up on her. I know that they've talked about they want possibly euthanasia, but I- I don't have any children. I'm not married. My dog's in my life, and it would be devastating to me. And I just don't want her to be given up again like she already was given up on by her first owners. So I would do anything to- whatever I need to do to try to save her and anything I need to do to make it safe. I do feel horrible. I would feel the same way that they do in their situation. So I don't blame them at all for feeling the way that they feel. But I just want to make sure that I'm speaking up on her behalf and on my own behalf, just to say that I will not let this happen again. And I'll do everything in my power to prevent it from happening.
If you're- you're done? If there's any questions from board members for anyone at this point?
I have a follow-up for Emily. You have to-
Sure.
When she's done.
When she's done. Okay. Are you-
Is that anything else?
Oh, no.
No. Emily, you had a question.
I have a follow-up for Emily when she's-
Yeah. She was done. I'm sorry. If you're finished, you can-
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Lanson?
Yeah, Emily. I'm assuming you've been to the premises. Any recommendations for any further containment? Or do you feel that the containment's adequate for the- for Gia?
So I did, going- yeah, going off of the orders that we kind of have to go off of a little bit, I did recommend a self-closing mechanism so that if someone wants to leave them open, they're just going to shut right away after that. We have seen padlocks or carrot beaners on there for an extra precaution.
When- when both- when both gates are closed, is there- is there a doorway that has access around? Like, is the front door- is the gate to the right of the front door? Can you get to the front door without going through the gate?
I'm not answering your question.
When- I'm trying to determine where the fencing is.
So it's backyard, so it just cuts off the front yard from the backyard. And there's a gate in the front that brings you to the front yard. And there's a gate in the back that brings you to the land behind my- my gate, my fence. So there's just those two gates. And there's no other way you could get out of there. And there's no other- there's no weak points in the fence. Like I said, the fence was put up in twenty-three. Previous to that, there were holes and whatnot. But now, it's a big history. So the only way she could get out is due to human error, someone making a mistake leaving a gate open, which is what I'm trying to prevent.
And you now have padlocks on the back, but on the front?
I mean, I can put a padlock on the front. That's like, just the only thing is that lawn people would need to come in to do the back.
No, chair.
Yep.
It's a big yard.
Just now, a follow-on question for you. I understand you have the padlocks, and you do have the need for access. Have you reached out to a fence company to see if they can install automatic closers on there, like a spring action?
I haven't thought I would do that. That would think things kind of-
Any other questions from the board? All right. Hearing none. I will close the testimony and all questions at this point. And if the next item is for the board to make a decision, we can craft one at this time, take it under advisement, and vote to continue the hearing to another date and time. What other wishes of the board?
Madam Chair. I motion- I motion that the homeowner implements self-closing gates, and we continue it for a three-month span to see if there's any further incident.
Is there a second to that motion? Three second. All right. Discussion, please. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, the only comment I will make is to Ms. McGinty, what I did like was simply, out of all of this, is that from what I've seen, and I've sat through too many dog hearings, is that, just my opinion, she may be the first to ever come here and show genuine remorse and concern. And didn't come in and blame the victim. Instead, took responsibility, which I think also goes a long way.
I agree with you. And she paid the- voluntarily paid the vet bills and everything else. Does speak volumes.
Any other comments? And I, too, will say, these are very difficult for all of us here. And I'm appreciative of the remorse shown, but I also understand, living in that- the fear of, you know, the dog may come over and attack again. So I hope this, what we're about to propose, works out. And if there isn't, if we have any more comments, I will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion made?
Right.
All right. Any opposed?
Are we giving her like a time limit on the-
Three months, you said.
Oh, three months. Well, three months for something else to happen. But what about her getting the mechanisms and stuff up?
Oh, I don't-
I would just say reasonable amount. I mean, it's the three- the windows times to collect them, so.
Would you like us to amend any motion? Or is that under- is that noted?
It should be a couple of weeks. Yeah.
You can amend that motion.
I mean, I think, given the- given the testimony from Ms. McGinty and her remorse, I have faith that she's going to follow through on.
Yeah.
So once you do, you will notify Emily, right? And she will notify us, just so we know that everything's contained in care?
Okay. I think, yeah. Did that. All the declarations starting now. Do I have to close this?
I think it should be awesome.
They're all set. All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be the number three under action items.
All right. We have the FY twenty-six through FY thirty IMA for participating in the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition. The Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition represents up to thirty-two towns in central Massachusetts, most of which are permities under the United States Environmental Protection Agency's Municipal Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MSFOR, permit. The coalition participants recognize and share that the US EPA's goal of maintaining water quality and recognizing that stormwater management is an important component in protecting the waters' resources of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and beyond. Our Conservation Commission is the contact for the town. We're asked to approve the renewal of the IMA effective July first, twenty-twenty-five, which will expire June thirtieth, twenty-thirty. The matching share of the coalition is a not-to-exceed amount of $4,000 each year, and I recommend the board approve the renewal.
I will move to renew the IMA effective July first, two thousand twenty-five. It will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and thirty- thirty. The matching share for Charlton shall not exceed $4,000 each year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda would be DPW Materials and Services. Andrew, bid awards?
Yes. On May first, twenty-twenty-five, at two o'clock PM, bids were received and opened for the DPW Materials and Services. After review of the bids, DPW Director Nick Peel is recommending the following bids be awarded. Item number one, biotumis concrete type one in place for $87.12 per ton to Mass Broken Stone, three-three-two Sawyer Hill Road, P.O. Box two-seven-six, Berlin, Mass. Item number two, full-depth reclamation or pavement reclamation at $3.21 per square yard to Murray Paving and Reclamation, Inc. And item number three, ten percent and twenty percent asphalt rubber surface treatment, ten percent at $4.45 per square yard and twenty percent, $5.75 per square yard to All States Construction out of Sunderland, Mass. These are the low bids for each item, and I would agree and recommend the board approve as requested.
Any other motion?
I move to approve the bids as requested.
One second.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. It's unanimous. The next item on the agenda would be to select a date, time, and location for our goals and objectives meeting. Andrew?
All right. At the request of Chair, Chairman Spewak.
I'm ready to name one.
I don't know. Just confident of myself. The board has requested to set a date, time, and location for a working session of the board to set goals and objectives for the next year. Working sessions have traditionally been held off-site, and currently, the evenings of June twenty-fourth and June twenty-sixth are available. What are the wishes of the board?
I like the idea. I'm good for that. I'm out both days. I'm on vacation June twenty-fourth to the thirtieth. If you have-
I'm sure.
Yep.
I volunteer for Legion tied up pretty much every evening from June through mid-July, but I am available midday for a virtual meeting if you have any dates available.
We can go with- we can pick other dates. We just thought we'd put down two. Do you want to?
The goal is not to push this into July, is it?
No.
Pushing July. This is just the-
All of us should be at it.
Yeah, we all should be at it, so.
Yeah.
So we can wait. We can- David, how we just got it all?
June right now, fortunately, for the most part, is pretty open.
No, we do. Pete, did you say the whole month of June? The entire month of June? You can do evening?
Yeah. Games are either five-thirty, seven, or eight. So I mean, if we do it late afternoon-
Or we can wait until August, Thursday, week of August. Absolutely.
Recommendations?
Madam Chair. If you guys want to give me five or six dates that might work for you guys within the next few months, I can pull them all together, put them into some sort of like root poll, and we can try to go off of that and try to set a final date for our- at our next meeting. It might be easier than everybody trying to look at the calendar right now.
And just a point of order, too. This is a housekeeping item, so it is- we can communicate with one another on this. It's not violating any open meeting law. So this is the good thing. So thank you for that. I think that'll work good. All right. Thank you very much. And when would you like those by?
By next week.
Everyone hear that? Yep. All right. It's on record now.
Sometime.
All right. Thank you. So by next week. All right. The next- the next item on the agenda would be talking about an attendance dashboard. Andrew?
Yeah. So at the request of Chairwoman Spewak, the board has requested to consider the procedure of providing a dashboard on the town website, which tracks the attendance of board members at meetings of the board. This would be a summary of the attendance of members as listed in the minutes. What are the wishes of the board on this?
I have nothing against it.
No, I have nothing against it. I think it's- it follows our transparency as far as-
Do we want to have a motion in a second before we discuss, or do you want to just discuss?
I just have a couple. I have a couple. I'm neither opposed or for this. I just question what data was reviewed to warrant, you know, such a proposal. My second- my second point, has Labor Council been counseled on this in regards to mass sick time PFMA and FMLA and how that would affect the dashboard and potential negative perceptions from protected sick time if somebody was out?
No, this- I guess we weren't clear. This would be just select board members. It's for attendance for select board members.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
Which is so- but basically, excuse me, what we're doing, and I think we've all heard this before because I certainly have, it's really difficult for people to, you know, once they elect an official, kind of track or monitor officials. The attendance, I've heard it. I'm sure everyone here has heard it. Where basically, in my opinion, I asked for this, taking information that already exists and consolidating it and making it more easily accessible to the general public. So it's already out there, but rather than having people go through all the minutes for whatever, you know, they're looking for, it's just taking what's there and putting it in a place that they can easily get to it. It's that simple.
I recognize that. But the point is that you're publicizing. And my request would be that Labor Council is consulted and gives a weighs it on opinion in regards to mass sick time PFMA and FMLA and how we would potentially handle those situations. That's just my point of view.
For the select board?
For a tracking board, yes.
For this is for an elected official.
Because, as you said, your elected members or the constituents are reviewing that, but if there's somebody out on a protective sick time, they shouldn't be penalized for something that's granted to them from the state and from the federal government.
Oh, I understand. So we're not- let me be clear. Since I asked for this to be on the agenda, I can give you the whole backstop here, backdrop, backstory. It's just making what's available right now. If someone looked at the minutes, they would see, you know, if someone was here, someone wasn't here. And just putting that out there, consolidating it.
So it was already publicized.
It's already, it's already there, so I'm just not understanding.
I understand.
You know, we could, I guess.
I mean, that's just my request.
No, we won't.
Mr. Lanson? If I may, so my own position on it, I think it's entirely unnecessary. I think that, to the chair's own point, the information's already out there. And I agree with Mr. Lanson said. I mean, frankly, I don't care if he passed or not. Doesn't make a difference. It's readily available information. To me, it's more or less, you know, is it something that's now feels like it wants to be used as a babysitting tool or a way to punish people? Because the people who are looking online at this are not going to know if the person in question was out because they had to have a surgery, if they're out of town for work. All they know is they just see, oh, look, that person missed three meetings. Well, they were out for surgery. It doesn't tell that kind of information. I think it's very misleading. And if I want to go a little further, I'd say I think that there are far more egregious offenses from current and former members of this board that would warrant tracking far before something is like this. I just think it's a childish overreach.
I understand. The other thing I will remind, some of us was on the board for a while ago. This goes along with transparency and accountability. And we had a report done not right before we hired our current town administrator. And this was, the transparency was an issue. Accountability was an issue. It's all outlined in that report and this addresses what we were supposed to do to kind of remedy and moving forward in the future. But anyway, and I would go so far to say, again, if someone wanted to opt out, again, not trying to shove it down anyone's throat, that if someone felt this wasn't for them, then they didn't, if everyone's okay with it, then you don't have to report it. This is just a suggestion. But so I guess I will entertain a motion in a second. We can discuss more and vote.
So I would entertain the motion. I follow, Mr. Lanson said, let's get that answer, Andrew.
Would you want to make it?
And let's bring it to the next meeting.
But we could make it, we could also, we could also make the vote contingent upon it being legal. So we can make it, if this way, we didn't have to bring it up again. If I'll?
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
It kind of expedites things and it's less messy, I guess.
Yeah.
Do we have an estimated cost?
Of what?
To update the website for this?
It's my time, it's my time at effort. That's your, that's your cost.
All right, so let's, so I will, I will move to create the list of the dashboard of attendance for the select board members only, conditional to the, you know, council approving that as there's no issues.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Three, so. I, motion passes. Did you, anyone abstain? I didn't hear them. Sorry, I abstained.
It was unanimous.
You all said yes?
No, I didn't care either way. I still think it's unnecessary, but I have no opposition to it.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, where are we? Oh, student, select board member report. All yours.
All right, as for my last report for Bay Path for the 2024-2025 school year for May 27th, 2025. As for my school-wide news, as graduation approaches, we want to thank our class of 2025 seniors for the memories, leadership, and lasting impact they have had on our students and our staff. We wish them luck and our best wishes in their endeavors beyond high school and we will miss them greatly. As for our sports, our Bay Path Spring Sports teams are wrapping up their outstanding seasons, celebrating their last senior nights to recognize those captains that carried us through the toughest games and practices. We extend a great thank you to our coaches for their time and dedication as well, with several of our teams are competing in playoffs to continue a fight for a strong finish. We wish all our athletes the best of luck. As for our student council and steering committee members, a huge thank you to our student council and steering committee members and advisors for their incredible work organizing our seniors' last high school dance to ensure it is a memorable one. With junior prom right around the corner, student excitement is building for another great night of memories to be made. And with our Hilltop Restaurant and Minutemen Salon closing for the end of the year shortly, we thank all that supported our wonderful students and staff that helped keep our services running. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
We wish you well. All right, and Andrew, I think it's back over to you.
All righty, so.
TA report.
Change the outline a little bit the way I do this time. So first, I'll start with some of the opportunities that we have available. So employment, we currently have the following positions available for employment opportunities. Assistant Library Director/Head of Youth Services, Police and Dispatcher, and Kitchen Coordinator, which is a part-time position. If you would like to apply for those positions, they are available on our town's website at townofcharlton.net/jobs. Also, we have a number of volunteer opportunities available. We have openings on the committees for the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee, Activities Council, Van Shell Development Committee, Conservation Commission Alternate, Cultural Council, Historical Commission, WRTA Advisory Board, and new this evening, two alternates for the Zoning Board of Appeals. If you're interested in serving on any of these positions, please submit a town bank form to our office expressing interest. As far as projects going on right now, this fire substation project, main drilling and blasting will be, start drilling and preparing their blast patterns on Friday, 5:30, for ledge removal on the site. We anticipate their test blast and first blast over on the site on Monday, 6/2. They will continue the blasting operations for about one to two blasts per day until they complete the process, which is anticipated to be no more than two weeks. There will be a groundbreaking event to commemorate the project on Wednesday, June 18th, at 4:00 P.M. at the site. Public is welcome to that when we put some stuff out on the site, just to get the word out. As far as the number two schoolhouse, we have finished the abatement work on the building and Crocker Architectural is currently in the process of replacing the slate roof and repairing some of the exterior woodwork. And this week, they're hoping to install some of the new structural ties to the roof. So that one, that project's moving along. As far as grants, this week, we were awarded a $73,915 grant as part of the Community Compact Municipal Fiber Program. This fund will be used to expand the municipal fiber network to the location of the new substation over on Oxford Road. Finally, I just want to recognize and thank the efforts of everyone that contributed to the Memorial Day Remembrance ceremonies last weekend. Just as a reminder, on June 14th, there will be a flag burning ceremony on the common at 5:00 P.M. If you have any old American flags that need to be retired, please drop them off at the flag drop box by the north entrance of Town Hall. And just one more reminder, the annual farmer's market on the town common is scheduled to begin this Wednesday from 4:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. Parking does get tight out front. If you have business at Town Hall, I would recommend coming in the morning before 4:00. But looking forward to that going on throughout the summer until August 27th.
Thank you. Right, next item would be select board member requests for future agenda items. Do you can say it now or you can always send it to Andrew?
Madam Chair, if you mind. The employee appreciation. Can we talk about it next meeting?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll send an email just about a traffic light. I mean, a traffic stop sign.
Anything else? And again, you always have the opportunity to email the request in as well. All right, so the next meeting announcement would be, our next regular scheduled select board meeting will be June 10th, 2025, at 6:30 P.M. at the Town Hall in Meeting Room 1. And next, we're going to be going into executive session, so. Who wants to read? Motion? I need someone to bring us in, make a motion.
Executive session, MGL C30A Section 21A to discuss strategy with respect to collaborative bargain and litigation, Chapter Charlton FF Union Grievance. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares to return to open session if needed and to adjourn.
And the chair so declares, we will take a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Steve? Aye.
Vash, aye.
David?
Aye.
Pete Lads said aye.
Aye. All right, we're now in executive session. Thank you for those who came today. We appreciate it, those who are watching. Thank you.